I call this meeting to order. Tonight's meeting is being held both virtually and in person. Sean, will you please call Rome?
Deputy Mayor Jaron?
I'm here.
Councilor Baggett?
Here.
Councilor Baldwin?
I'm here.
Councilor Brown?
Here.
Councilor Malanga?
Oh, excuse.
Councilor Stern?
Here.
Councilor Trout Manuel?
Here.
Sean, um, do we have any announcements, reports, and presentations?
No, Chair.
Thank you, Sean. Tonight's agenda item for council discussion begins with ordinance number six eight four nine. Uh, before we welcome Director Thomas, I would like to kindly remind council members, no one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to speak has spoken. And council members, please raise your hands to be recognized. With that, we welcome Director Thomas.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, good evening, council. I'm Director Thomas and here to talk about ordinance number six eight four nine. For some of those of you that have been on the council for the last several years, you may recognize this. This is the city's option to levy levy an additional percentage of the sales tax that the state of Washington collects. So this isn't an additional tax on top of the current existing sales tax. This is just the city of Auburn wanting to claim a portion of the Washington State sales tax. And we are granted this authority from some legislation that had taken place back in two thousand and nine, which allows cities to develop local revitalization areas. So back in two thousand and nine, we got permission to form a local revitalization area. We issued bonds for seven point two four million dollars. And we pay a portion of those bonds with a piece of this additional sales tax that we levy from the state. So this point zero one eight four percent that we take back from the state can't exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So every year we we levy to take that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state and we apply that towards our debt service. We are able to do this for twenty five years. This is our, so we issued bonds for a payback of a period of twenty five years. We're in their thirteenth year, we refunded them back in twenty twenty with a term date of twenty third, twenty thirty four. So when we make our final payment on these bonds, that will also be our final year for being able to levy the point zero one eight four percent from the state. So with that, um, we have to pass adopt this ordinance every year to renew that levy and file with the state before the end of February each year. So with that, I don't really have any other information to report unless there are any questions from council.
Council, do you have any questions for Director Thomas? Seeing none, uh, we'll move on to the next item. Next item on our agenda is pavement preservation funding overview. Directed by Director Gau.
Good evening. So for the record, Ingrid Gau, Director of Public Works. And with me tonight doing this presentation will be Jamie Thomas, our finance director. So give me a moment and I will share my screen and we will get going. So let me know if you can all see the screen. Wonderful. Okay, so as we were discussing, um, the twenty three twenty four budget cycle that's upcoming, one of the conversations that we need to have with council is about our preservation, our street preservation program funding. Uh, and so we thought it would be great to come and do a quick overview of that funding process with the council as well as looking at what our current funding is, what our forecasted need is, and then what some of those options are for how the council can consider that funding. So we're going to go through that with you tonight. And the first thing I wanted to go through with you is the existing funding that we have for what we call our one oh five fund, which is our arterial and collector street preservation funds. So the preservation funds only do rebuilding of roadways and paving of roadways. They don't do expansion of roadways. They don't do sidewalks. They don't do traffic signals. So this is a very specific fund just for the preservation of the roads. And on the arterial and collector street preservation program, that is basically funded by a one percent utility tax on all utilities. So both city utilities as well as private utilities. So that would be gas, power, um, cable and telecommunications. So the city collects that one percent from all of those, including its own utilities. And that generates approximately one point eight million dollars a year that the council has taken the action to set aside specifically to go to the arterial preservation program. In addition, we supplement that funding for arterial projects with grant funds. There are a few programs that we can actually get grant funding for preservation of roadways. Two programs specifically, one through the Transportation Improvement Board, which we received funding most recently for the Fourth Street Southeast Reconstruction Project and also for the Second Street Southeast Reconstruction Project. And then through Puget Sound Regional Council where we are able to get grant funds for overlaying of arterial and collector streets. So and then average over the last several years, we've been able to leverage about one and a half million a year in grant funding for the program. And going forward into twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, we have one point one million and one point six million currently awarded to us through grants. Any funding beyond that, so twenty twenty five and beyond is dependent upon whether we are actually successful on those grants. One of the other things I wanted to talk about with you tonight, and some of you might recognize this from the presentation we did last year on the State of Our Streets report, uh, as we wanted to talk about what is the current condition of our roads and what is that forecasted need that we have in order to meet the target that the council adopted many years ago. That target is what we call a pavement condition index of seventy. So the pavement condition index is a way that we rank the current condition of the roadways with a hundred being a brand new paved road and zero basically being a gravel road. So our target for an average of all the street system is to hit an average of seventy. So that means we have some that are above that. We have some that are below that. Uh, and where you're at on that curve at seventy, you're in that area where it's a basically an overlay for the roadway. When you get down to about a PCI of forty, it's getting into that reconstruction zone for a roadway. So back in twenty twenty one, we did some forecasting based upon our current funding for the program and basically looked at what was it going to take for our arterial program to actually get to the target of seventy? So currently our our average PCI for the arterial program is at about sixty. So we have a ways to go to get it up to that average of seventy. And in looking at our current funding, which is roughly about three point three million on average a year between our grants and our current funding, basically, we don't actually get to a PCI of seventy. We actually start losing ground. So that's the red line on the chart that you see in front of you. And so we looked at what would it actually take to get to seventy? And so, uh, looking at a five million dollar a year investment into our arterial program, we actually reached that target of seventy by twenty thirty four. So about twelve years from now, uh, we would actually get to that target if we were able to fund it at five million a year. Let's see. And so in looking at what that need is, we wanted to bring to you kind of where we're currently at with our funding. So you can see in the chart, we have the current funding for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. That includes both city funds and the two grants that we currently have secured, which shows that even to get to the five million for the next two years, we are short funding. And then for twenty twenty five and beyond, we can be short up to three point three million per year simply because we don't have any grants secured. And grant programs for the arterial program are competitive. So it is very hard to base our grant funding or our funding for the overall program on the idea that we're always going to get grants. Uh, and that is true in that I think one of the years in the last five years, we did not actually get any preservation grants. So that is something that we are going to be facing as we continue to move forward in time is that those grants are going to be harder and harder to get. Okay, and then I wanted to give you a quick overview of what we call our one oh three funds. So this is our local street funds. So we separate out the local streets from those collector and arterials, mostly because the collector and arterials are able to get grant funds. Our local street program is not eligible for any grant programs that we're aware of. And so currently our funding for that program is we have some city transfers from the three utility funds, water, sewer, and storm, in the amount of fifty thousand each for those, so a total of a hundred and fifty thousand. And that is basically to help pay for the cost of the impact that we have from those utilities in making cuts into local roads for repairs to our water and sewer and storm systems in those roadways. And then on top of that, the last several years, we have been funded by a transfer from our real estate excise tax in the amount of about one point five million. That is only funded through this year. There's nothing currently identified for twenty three and beyond. Uh, and we do have several capital needs coming up, which many of you are aware from previous conversations. One of those that I can think of that is a significant impact would be the Facility Master Plan, which is the police and public works and parks maintenance and operation facilities that we are looking at needing to do in the near future. And so, uh, looking at how much funding we get in the REIT program, it's not necessarily sustainable for us to continue funding this program from those REIT funds, which can have an impact on our ability to do those other capital needs. And so with this, we also did last year, again, another forecasting of what the impact or what the need was for the local street program. And with this one, we went a little step further. We basically looked at it as if, okay, we don't continue doing the program beyond twenty twenty two as we're currently funded. And you can see in the black line that we start dropping fairly quickly down to about a P, uh, PCI of forty by twenty forty. Uh, and if we continue going at our current funding rate, which is about one point six five million a year, which is the red line, we will drop below that target of seventy by that twenty forty time period. We are currently in this program just slightly over seventy, so we have a little bit of give in the overall program. So in doing the forecasting, what we identified was that two million a year would put us right at maintaining that PCI of an average of seventy for this program into the future. So, uh, with that, you can see from this, since we don't have any funding identified for twenty three or twenty four yet, we are woefully underfunded and in need of one point eight five million to continue the program into the next two-year budget cycle. And then beyond that, again, at that one point eight five million to maintain that two million per year. And with that, I'm going to have Jamie talk to you about where our current funding, uh, or what our options are as we go forward.
Thanks, Ingrid. So there's actually a few different options. So we wanted to hit really the primary options, the options that could generate potentially the most revenue, since there is such a significant funding gap moving forward between both of these funds. And the first one is our utility, our utility rate on our city utilities in particular. So our current tax rate is ten percent on our internal utilities. So that's our water, sewer, storm, um, and garbage utilities that the city of Auburn provides. One percent of that goes to the arterial street fund. Um, and if you recall, we actually just recently increased our utility rate because our utility rates are council manic. They are, um, um, approved by the council as far as whether we're going to increase the rates or not. We recently increased our rates in twenty twenty one and they had previously been, um, at six percent to the general fund and one percent to the arterial street fund. And we have no maximum tax rate for our our utility rates on our city utilities. And we can actually use any of that that utility tax towards whether it's arterial collectors and or the local streets program because utility tax is considered like a general fund tax. So, um, the council has the authority on how they want, um, that utility tax distributed. To give you an example of what every one percent in, um, increase in utility tax creates, um, we generate about seven hundred and five thousand dollars in additional revenue for every one percent increase if we were to apply a tax rate increase across all of our four utilities. So that is also something that the council has the ability to, um, to make a decision over whether or not you want to increase the utility rate for one, two, three, or four of those internal utilities. But if you were to increase them one percent across the board, it would generate approximately seven hundred and five thousand dollars a year in additional revenue. So another funding option, which is actually a pretty significant funding option in the city of Auburn, um, currently has, um, this ability and that's using the Transportation Benefit District. Back in two thousand and eleven, the city formed a Transportation Benefit District. And having the TBD allows us to generate revenue in a couple of different ways, either through car tabs, car tab fees, um, increasing the sales tax on sales in the city of Auburn, um, excess levies, and actually also property tax levies on, um, GO bonds. So I'm going to run through some of them. Um, the, the ability to impose some of these is different depending on which one, um, we were to impose. So on car tabs, um, the council, through council action, could approve a twenty dollar per license fee and that would generate about nine hundred thousand dollars a year. The council could also enact a forty thou, or a forty dollar per license fee and that would generate one point eight million dollars per year. The caveat is that we would have to have the twenty dollar fee in place for twenty month, twenty four months prior. So this would be like a, if ultimately the council wanted to put in place a forty dollar, um, car tab fee, it wouldn't go into effect until year three. So the first two years would be twenty dollars and then the third year, um, could be at forty dollars. The same goes with fifty dollars. The council has the option to impose a fifty dollar license fee that would generate two point two five million dollars annually. But also it's a tiered, it's a tiered fee. So we would have to have a twenty dollar tab fee for the first two years, then four years, three and four, we would have to have a forty dollar tab fee. And then it wouldn't be until year five that we could enact that fifty dollar per per license fee. If we wanted to go move forward and try to get the fifty dollar per car per license enacted in year one, it would need to go to voters. So if we were really trying to get that two point two five million dollars and generate that write-off in the first year, um, council couldn't, um, vote that in, but we could take it to the voters and with a simple majority, if they vote, um, voter approved, we can act fifty dollars per vehicle in the first year. We also have the option through voter approval to do a one-year excess levy. This would be an increase on property tax, not levied by the city of Auburn, but levied by the city of Auburn's Transportation Benefit District. So two different taxing authorities. There is also the ability to levy a point two percent additional on top of our current, the current total rate in the city of Auburn is ten point one percent on our sales tax. This would add another point two percent that would generate approximately four point two million dollars to, um, to the city of Auburn. Again, that would be, um, would require voter approval. And then the same thing, um, with the GO bonds. If we were trying to generate a significant amount to cover our principal and interest for GO bonds, we could go to the voters to increase, um, a proper, or add a property tax levy for the Transportation Benefit District. So a lot of cities, um, over the last ten years, ten years have, um, imposed some sort of, um, the, the Transportation Benefit District funding options, most have elected to go the car tab route, the car tab fee route. Um, I think the, the cities that are closest to us, there's a pretty long list, but the cities closest to us are Covington, Des Moines, Maple Valley, Shoreline. They all have car tab fees on in their cities. Um, they all kind of vary between the twenty and forty, um, dollars, um, per vehicle. And then Shoreline, Billingham, and Squim have imposed, um, through a voter, voter approval, a say that point two percent sales tax onto their, to the local sales tax. We put together, um, an example, I think our approach historically, when it comes to financing things, we don't like to necessarily put, um, especially if we're looking at new revenue sources. We don't want to put it all in the back of one revenue source. So we looked at a combination. If we were trying to find a way to fund seven million dollars annually between the two funds, between arterial streets and local streets, we know we have about seven million dollars that we need to fund annually. What could a potential combination look like? And this is, this is just two examples of many, many different ways we could get to the same seven million dollars. But an example, one, um, we could fully fund both of those programs at seven million dollars a year if we, um, implemented a twenty dollar, um, car tab fee and increased our city utility tax, um, by four point three percent. So that would be a total utility tax of fourteen point three percent. So it's in addition to our, um, ten percent that we currently have. Um, comparatively, um, an example two, we could also get to the same level of funding if we just put it all on the back of, let's say, utility tax. If we didn't want to, um, leverage our Transportation Benefit District, uh, abilities and we just wanted to fund it all with the, the city utility tax, um, we could increase city utility taxes by five point six percent, um, and still, um, generate that seven million dollars. And as you can see in these, um, in kind of the math, we are still taking into consideration that we will, um, secure at least some base level amount of grants, um, um, each year. So this is kind of best case scenario. We're still securing grants on an annual basis. Um, but then of course, if we don't secure those grants, that would probably mean just a reduction in, in programs for those years.
Okay, so that was a lot of information we threw at you. And as Jamie said, there's a lot of options to consider and a lot of different ways to put those numbers together and look at those different funding options. So in discussing this, what we are suggesting and proposing to the council is that we, uh, the council create an ad hoc committee to sit down and have some more detailed discussions with Jamie and I about those options and what that potential funding looks like. This is again, all in preparation for the twenty three twenty four budget process. Uh, the, that ad hoc committee would then make recommendations to the overall council about what their findings are and what their suggestions are for how that funding might then get incorporated into the twenty three twenty four budget. And then, of course, we would actually develop that budget based upon the recommendations and what council actually adopts to move forward with. And then, of course, after that is implementing all of those funding options. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing my screen. Are there any questions?
Council member Sterns.
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, just one quick question. I, I think I missed it, but, um, did you say that, uh, federal way and Kent do or do not have the car tab fees?
A currently federal way, I do not believe either federal way or Kent have the fees. Let me double check my list really quick.
Yeah, but I would add, um, Councilmember Sterns, that Kent does have a fairly significant utility tax on solid waste that they use to fund their local street program.
That's very helpful to know. Um, okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Uh, my question, uh, probably would be appropriate maybe for a more detailed look by the ad hoc committee. But, uh, you know, I'm questioning, uh, you know, every tax has an impact of some kind. The utility tax, who does that impact the most? Is there a progressive or regressive, uh, aspect to that tax? Uh, how would you describe that?
Do you want me to take that, Ingrid?
No, go ahead, Jamie.
Okay, so I, I think I would probably classify it more as a regressive tax because it's uniformly applied to all of the utility users in the city of Auburn. So whether you are a single family resident that owns your home or whether you're a renter, as long as you're paying your utilities, um, directly to the city of Auburn, you're paying that utility bill directly to the city of Auburn, um, you would be paying, um, you would, the utility tax would be absorbed, um, essentially in the cost of providing service. Um, so in that sense, because it's not tiered, um, it with it, with a few exceptions, there isn't, um, an income tax or an economic, um, benefit to, um, uh, to different users, it would be considered regressive.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I wanted to confirm for the forecasts, uh, that we're looking at about, what is it, fourteen and eighteen or so years out? Uh, is that, are those projections inclusive of new streets that may come into our portfolio over those years?
So the forecast, yeah, the forecasting program, I mean, basically it's our pavement management system that we have. Um, and a new street that comes in, comes in at a hundred once it's built because it's in brand new condition and it will start deteriorating after that. So it takes into account kind of how that growth happens. Uh, and if anything, basically those brand new streets are going to actually help that number increase a little bit um, as we go forward in time. But right now that forecasting is based on what are the streets that we have within our current system? And yes, you're correct in that they exist, the new streets would have to be incorporated into those future years. Um, but it's the existing streets that are really the condition problems that we have.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Sterns? Did we, do we lose Councilmember Sterns? Oh, there we go. Can't hear you. You, you muted.
There we go. I, I, I don't think you could hear me. Um, I, I just want to follow up on, on that excellent question from, uh, Councilmember Brown. So for the car tabs, the, if we did a twenty or forty or any dollar amount, that doesn't vary either, right? I mean, in other words, if someone is paying a car tab on, you know, a used two thousand and ten car, it's the same amount that they would pay on their twenty twenty three Tesla. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Um, I have a question regarding the car tabs. Uh, how do we compare, how would we compare to the surrounding cities? We went with a twenty dollar increase and then the forty dollar increase over a period of three years.
Jamie, do you happen to have that detail up?
Yeah, I, I did. And then I went to another. So if we were looking at, there are, there are several cities around us. Most of them have a twenty dollar car tab fee. Um, a lot of them have graduated to the forty dollar car tab fee. Um, and just scanning the list, um, I actually don't see any that have a fifty dollar, um, car tab fee at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Director Thomas. Uh, anybody else have any other questions? Councilmember Baldwin?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, my question was, uh, to our rate for our utilities, do we have, how that compares, um, with a little bit more of a range to our neighboring cities? If we're at ten, do we have a rough idea of where their range is?
Yeah, Jamie, go ahead. Yeah, we, we have all that information for all the neighboring cities by the different utilities. I think that that was one of those things that a, an ad hoc committee would really want to get into for comparison purposes. Um, Ingrid had, um, we're right in, we're right average as far as our ten percent, just kind of general idea. We're right in the average as far as our ten percent on our internal city utilities. And then, um, Ingrid had mentioned that, uh, Kent has actually a very significantly larger, uh, tax on their solid waste utility. Um, but we would, um, provide, it's a lot of information when you talk all the different taxes in all the different cities. It's good information to, to go with that. Okay.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Yes, Jamie. Um, Councilwoman Baldwin asked one of the questions I was going to ask, but the other one, did I, did you say that, uh, the other cities took this to a vote, the forty, twenty and forty dollar tabs? Did they take it to a vote for?
No, there's, as far as I know, there's only one city that has actually gone to a vote for car tabs and that was City in Battle to impose a sixty dollar car tab fee.
Okay, so the other ones have not?
The other ones have just done the council manic, um, car tabs.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. How many members do you need for your ad hoc committee? And how long do you think that committee will be meeting?
So typically the ad hoc committees are three council members. Um, and I would suspect that we would be meeting several times over the next, uh, couple of months in order for us to kind of get to that preferred option to then bring back to the council in order for us to build it into the twenty three twenty four.
I can't hear what you're saying. Sorry. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Backus?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor and I have discussed what
Thank you. The Deputy Mayor and I have discussed what an ad hoc committee would look like. And per your council rules of procedure, the Deputy Mayor is, is always considered a member of the, of an ad hoc committee. And we have discussed having the chair and the vice chair of the Public Works Committee, since this is a public works issue, as the two other members of the ad hoc committee. Okay, I will turn.
Any other questions? And I don't see any. Thank you, Director Thomas and Director Gao for the comprehensive speech that you guys gave. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the photo enforcement school zone safety cameras. And that is going to be chaired by Director Gao.
Thank you. And I am actually going to pass it off to Jacob Sweeting, who is going to take the spot of Cecile Malik tonight, who couldn't be here to do the presentation for us tonight and walk us through where we're at on the photo enforcement potential contract and what you're going to see as we go into March on a potential contract for you to consider. Jacob?
Okay, thanks, Ingrid. Just give me a second. I'm going to share my screen. How'd we do? Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So, good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, City Council. Once again, for the record, my name is Jacob Sweeting, City Engineer. And I am filling, filling in for Cecile. Your agenda packet has Cecile as the presenter tonight, but like Ingrid said, she couldn't be here. So I'm going to, I'm going to give him my best shot, but probably won't do as well as she might have. Okay, so tonight I'm going to talk about photo enforcement. I'm going to start with some background about photo enforcement in Auburn. Previously, we had a photo enforcement program in place from two thousand and six to two thousand and fourteen. That program included red light photo enforcement at three intersections and speed enforcement in six school zones. So in November of two thousand and fourteen, the City Council was actually considering a new contract with a different vendor, but ultimately decided not to move forward with photo enforcement at all. So about six years later, in March of two thousand and twenty, at the City Council retreat, there was some discussion and a presentation about photo enforcement. And in October of that same year, city staff came back and provided the City Council with additional information about photo enforcement options and discussed the potential of moving forward with photo enforcement once again in Auburn. And just a reminder, school zone enforcement and red light enforcement and actually railroad crossing enforcement are the only three types of photo enforcement that are allowed in Washington State. Additionally, the infractions that are issued by photo enforcement are considered, they don't impact your driving records, they're very similar to parking tickets. And excuse me. And then subsequent to the October discussion with City Council, we went ahead and issued a request for proposals from photo enforcement vendors. And in those proposals, we asked for those vendors to provide us with a couple, a couple of different options for City Council to consider and discuss. One option was to move forward with the program that would only include, include school zone flashers. And the other program would include, or I'm sorry, school zone speed cameras. And the other option would include both the school zone cameras and red light cameras. So we issued the RFPs and we actually selected a vendor to move forward with discussions and negotiations in April two thousand and twenty-one. The selected vendor, their name is Ver mobility, formerly American Traffic Solutions. We selected them because they have a lot of local experience. They work with many of our neighbors, including Kent, Renton, Bellevue, Seattle, Federal Way, and Puyallup. And they also work with the King County Court System, which would be the court system that actually administers the infractions issued through the program. They had a really well-organized team, well-organized request for proposals. They have a great customer service group. They have a good public outreach program. And they've been in business since two thousand and four and serving jurisdictions in King County since two thousand and five. So since then, since May of two thousand and twenty-one, we've been discussing the different options with the vendor and going through some negotiations. And ultimately, the negotiated contract that we have only includes school zone speed cameras and does not include red light camera enforcement. And this is because while moving forward with the school zone enforcement seems to have had that general council support from our previous discussions, we feel that additional analysis and discussions would be needed before we could move forward with a program that also includes red light camera enforcement. So what we have moving forward, or proposed move forward, and are discussing further tonight, is just a contract that includes the school speed zone cameras. Now, the red light cameras could be considered at a later time, but like I said, it would require additional discussion with the City Council, an additional negotiation with the vendor. And ultimately, to move forward with a red light camera, it would require an amendment to this agreement that would require City Council approval. So now I'd like to go into some explanation of why we need school zone speed enforcement and the benefits it will have. This slide presents data regarding, regarding traffic enforcement by police. There are two hundred and fifty, over almost two hundred and fifty miles of streets and twenty-two school zones with flashing beacons in Auburn. The police traffic unit has five positions, two of which are vacant, and it's been somewhat difficult to keep those positions filled. In two thousand and nineteen, there are about twenty-five hundred traffic infractions issued, three hundred and fifteen of which were school zone infractions. Unfortunately, with this much ground to cover and also having to spend time processing collision reports and investigations, the time our officers, officers have available to conduct speed patrols is somewhat limited. So some of the, some of the challenges that we face that the speed cameras will help us with. The challenge is that speeding is a behavioral issue that is really a driver's choice. Without consistent and regular enforcement of the school speed zone that encourages drivers to make the choices not to speed, simply seems that just keeps happening. And we don't have enough officers today to provide the level enforcement that we need to actually produce and maintain this behavioral change of encouraging people not to speed in the school zones. We hear there's some students, we hear some parents, teachers, and bus drivers who regularly report concerns about speeding vehicles. These higher speeds increase the likelihood of injuries and fatalities and crashes involving pedestrians. So the benefits of the school zone cameras is that it provides this constant and regular enforcement that will result in increased driver compliance and improved safety of students, pedestrians, and other motorists near the schools. The cameras will allow officers to spend time focusing on other enforcement activities. All speeding in fact, infractions are captured by the cameras. This means offers, officers do not have to pursue and pull over one vehicle at a time to issue a ticket. This eliminates any perceived bias that could occur as to who gets pulled over and who doesn't. And finally, any potential excess revenue, if it did exist, could be used to fund additional traffic safety projects, traffic enforcement efforts, or other city needs as decided and approved by the City Council. So this slide speaks again to the safety benefits of trying to slow people down. And first of all, the federal, federal highway administration has actually identified speed safety cameras as an effective treatment to reduce speeds. And they don't do that lightly. It's actually hard to get the approval on any type of speed reduction approaches usually. But they definitely are an advocate of the speed cameras. So the illustration on this, on this slide is powerful. What it shows is that at forty miles per hour, if a pedestrian's hit, they only have a one out of ten chance of actually surviving at all. If we can reduce those speeds down to twenty miles per hour, which is the posted speed limit in a school zone, that chance of survival increases to nine out of ten. It's a very significant increase in safety. So some of the key terms of the contract that we have negotiated with Ver mobility. I've already said, the contract itself is for school speed cameras only. The contract is also designed to be cost neutral. It also includes vendor training. So the vendor will provide training to police, to public works, to the court staff, and others involved with the actual review and processing of infractions. The system will be fully compliant with state and local laws. And then as far as identifying locations for enforcement, some of the data collection efforts has already begun to evaluate which school zones are in need of additional compliance. And that data will be reviewed and ultimately locations selected. For each camera location, the cost will be four thousand dollars per month when the cameras are active. So that's ten months out of the year. And then the two months during the summer, there'd be no charge for those cameras that are not activated. The contract term would be five years with an option to renew for another two years. So just really briefly, a lot of people ask how the cameras work. So the cameras are installed about thirty feet before the school zone flashers and are activated when they detect speeding vehicles, when the beacon flash, the beacons are actually flashing. So they are not activated outside of the school zones when the school beacons are not flashes. They're not always issuing tickets. It's only in that hour or so during the day when the beacons are actually turned on. So when there is a speeding vehicle, they record a short video of the infraction and produce two pictures. One, that includes the actual school zone flasher to show that it was functioning at the time of the infraction, and the other will include the license plate of the vehicle. So then the owner of the vehicle sent a notice of infraction in the mail after the infraction has been reviewed by a police officer and seemed to meet all the requirements, which there are many. And then it goes through the processing and is sent to the driver. And at that point, the driver can review the information about the infraction online and access the video and the photos and actually pay online if they choose to. Or they can also choose to dispute the infraction if they so choose. So where we are at right now is, after today's discussion, we plan to bring the school zone photo enforcement contract to the City Council with a resolution for approval on March seventh. Once we have the executed contract, we'll work further with the vendor to analyze the collected compliance data to identify which school zones would benefit the most from the enforcement cameras. Then we would set up the system, form the public outreach, install signage, and then ultimately get the system up and running by this fall. And that's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Jacob, a couple of questions, if I may. You mentioned something there about a cost neutral. Could you explain that again?
Yes, so I guess, so one of the concerns, right, is that how much, if we're paying four thousand dollars per camera, at some point, if we are encouraging compliance, ultimately, we would get to the point where maybe we are no longer cost neutral and we have to pay out of pocket for these cameras. The terms that we have negotiated in the contract actually protect us from that. They, they indicate that the amount of money that we collect for our, for the infractions, plus a certain amount of overhead for the city, we will not have to pay more to Ver mobility than ultimately what we have collected on a per-annual basis. So there's reconciliation that will happen each year to align how much we've collected with how much we actually owe for the, for the cameras.
Have we considered a shared revenue with the proposed contractor?
I guess I would. I don't quite understand what you mean by that. Maybe we have, but I'm not quite sure what you mean.
Well, you know, basically, you know, we had, we had these before, before they were taken out. But I think that we had a fixed base type of arrangement, and it wound up costing the city an awful lot of bucks. So what I was wondering about, do we have any kind of a thing in the RFP or the, the discussions with the contractor, considering a, a share, sharing of the revenue, like sixty percent city and forty percent for the contractor, as an example?
I can provide some clarification, Councilmember. So the revenue that we receive, the city basically keeps all the revenue except for what we pay the vendor, that four thousand dollars per month. And what we put in the RFP is that we have a twenty-five percent overhead for our costs for processing those tickets. So whether that's our cost for court or a cost for PD, what we have set up in the contract is that our costs, so if, if we collect less than four thousand a month for those cameras, so let's say we had one camera, we're only collecting three thousand in a month, that's all we pay to Ver mobility is that three thousand. If we collect six thousand, we only pay that four thousand to Ver mobility, and the city keeps the other two thousand.
Good. I think that sums up my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Jacob, thank you for a great report. My question has to do with, I don't want us having the problems that Kent is having with. My understanding is that the schools are going to be taking care of the cameras, turning them on when the appropriate time of school. And I know that that is a concern because sometimes those cameras are on during time that there's no school. And also, they're on before the school is let out. And I was just wondering, how, how is this going to be controlled?
That's a great question. So one of the reasons that we really liked Ver mobility is their customer service and how they presented their operations. So the, the cameras themselves will be automated and programmed to match the, the timing that we have in our beacons, on the actual flashing beacons, and the beacons themselves are actually controlled and monitored by city staff. So city staff here are the ones who actually worked with the school district to find out what their calendar schedule is and what their start and end times are. And then we go out, we, we program all those. And then the cameras actually will sync up with the beacons to match those times.
Okay, so it will be city staff that will be programming?
We, we program the flashing beacons, and then the cameras work with the flashing beacons.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Trump Manuel. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Jacob. That's a really great presentation. I had a question because my brain is really not capable of performing complex math equations. So maybe you could help me out here. Four thousand a month. Let's say that, I'll call that like the break even number. How many, first of all, how expensive are the tickets? And then how many of them need to be issued to hit four thousand to break even?
Sure. So we, we anticipated a question like this, and we also did some of this analysis, of course, in looking at this whole program. But what it comes down to with some of the overhead of the city's cost to actually run the program as well, internal costs, is that each, each camera itself, when it generates an infraction, per city code, those infractions are currently at two hundred dollars apiece. That is tied to what our typical parking infraction is. And if we're at two hundred dollars apiece, in any given month, each camera would each camera would uh a break even point, say that would be twenty-five uh infractions in one month per camera.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
If I can. Council member Sterns.
Can I add uh just one thing to that Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Um, so many of our neighboring cities that have uh photo enforcement in school zones, they are issuing uh per location uh up to three thousand plus tickets per year on average. So um the risk of not being able to collect enough to pay for those cameras is pretty small at the beginning. Our hope is is that as enforcement improves, that those citations will drop, we'll see more compliance and we get down to where we're at that cost neutral point.
Thank you, uh Director Gob. Uh council member Baldwin.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Uh, if we are experiencing speeding in school zones as an issue, uh, what other measures have been considered to look at reducing traffic or to bring in traffic calming in those areas?
Yeah, that that's a great question. That that speaks to some of uh what we were talking about on the slides. We've you know, we that we feel the complaints, we go out, we do speed studies and then we work very closely with police officers uh to try to try to really pinpoint the resources they have in the areas where we're seeing those issues. And even with that, they just they're still stretched thin and we can't get to all the areas where we see the speeding issues. So we have, we have used speed studies and observations to try to pinpoint when and where they're doing the enforcement, but we still seem to be uh not reaching everywhere we we want to reach.
I was thinking more in the terms of uh physical barriers, so speed bumps, speed humps in those areas. Was that considered as an option?
So so we do have a neighborhood traffic calming program that is the past has installed uh speed cushions in various locations. That program uh was put on hold uh during COVID and actually revamped. Uh Cecile came, I think, a few weeks ago and gave a presentation about the new program that's moving forward. So uh those in some some cases uh are in school zones, in some cases they're not, but doesn't focus specifically on the school zones. I'll tell you that um, you know, in the schools, when we we've done, we've worked with the school district on some of the remodeling projects where they're rebuilding the front of the schools. And when they do so, we try to incorporate appropriate traffic calming measures such as curb bulb outs where there's pedestrian crossings. Um, you know, we'll look at things like uh the width of the lanes and if they could be a little bit narrower or to try to encourage slower speeds, then we'll do that as well. Um, but overall, you know, it's kind of um sporadic at this time and um really could be something that we look at more as we move forward with that traffic calming program.
Thank you, council member Baldwin. Council member Trump Manuel.
Jacob, one one more question. Have we done a study of how many wrecks have happened within the past or twelve months around the school area, school zones?
So so we do have all the police records of crashes. There has not been, we haven't focused an analysis to say this is X number of crashes that have occurred uh in the last twelve months. But that information is is certainly available to to look at if we choose to.
Okay, thank you. I would be interested in knowing that.
Council members uh Sterns.
Um, thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, one last question. Uh Jacob, can you um provide us with a map of where the schools are and where the cameras would be?
Certainly, yeah. So the the final locations haven't been chosen yet. Uh literally, the 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 data, compliance data was just wrapped up. Actually, we don't have the data yet. It's still being analyzed. So once we have the data and work to analyze it and identify the locations, uh then we can certainly provide a map of where this will be.
Um, oh, okay. So that but that'll be before we vote off, right?
Well, so we're planning right now to come back on March seventh. And at that time, I don't believe that we will have the locations finalized. Now, we could provide the locations that were studied. Uh, it's just I don't believe that we'll actually have those specific uh locations is at that time.
So part of the contract, part of the contract is doing that analysis and setting up that selection process for what locations we actually locate um the speed cameras in. So the contract itself is not specific to a location because we can potentially change those locations as we go forward. So if we end up with uh significant compliance at a particular location, we need the flexibility in the contract to be able to locate that speed camera at a different location if it's if it if we're now reaching that compliance and we're now starting to actually not collect enough to pay for that camera.
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry, because I I I think what I'm asking, this is sort of just based on my lack of knowledge of how many school zones are there? You know, are there like two hundred or are there like fifteen? You know, I mean, it's so it's now it sounds like you're not going to put cameras in all the school zones just at a select few. So I I guess um with that in mind, yeah, uh maybe my question would be more like, you know, maybe in the in the interest of transparency, could we um, you know, when we do go forward, you know, put a map on on the city website so everyone could kind of see where they are.
There there are currently twenty-two school zones. And um, you know, a rough estimate would be probably will somewhere between six and twelve. That will end up with some sort of enforcement.
And yes, we can provide information once we have those locations selected to the council of where those locations are, as well as there'll be signage at each of those locations per the state law we're required to sign to indicate to the drivers that there is photo enforcement.
Um, I have a question. Um, my question is, is can council review the contract before we uh bring it to uh the council itself?
So so I mean, yes, the count, the contract will be part of the uh next action that council sees, so you'll get that in advance of the council meeting.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Any other questions, council? If not, I'm going to move forward.
Thank you.
Council member Baldwin.
Thank you. Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor. I do have a few more questions uh on this particular topic is uh what would be the speed limit for citation? How many miles over the posted limit would we begin citing?
So that would be something that uh PD will coordinate to decide. I that has not been decided yet, as far as I know.
Okay. Uh Deputy Mayor, am I allowed a follow on?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, in addition to that, um is this intended to be revenue generating for the city as part of this uh this intent behind the program? Or is it specifically speed reduction in school zones?
No, from day one, our absolute focus has been on safety. Everything that we're doing is trying to realize safety and also do it in a way that's not going to empty our pocketbooks. So when we issue the RFP and all of our negotiations and the contract that you'll see is all focused on being revenue neutral. Now, when we first start out, if we're in school zones that are generating a lot of tickets and we have a really poor compliance rates, we probably will see some revenue, in my opinion. Now, as time continues, with success of the program, the compliance will increase and those revenues will de- decrease to the point where hopefully we end up being revenue neutral with good compliance in those school zones, which means more safety, better safety.
I think the reason I ask in that space is that from my personal experience with neighborhood traffic calming is that a speed cushion is typically the most uh effective and immediate way to slow down a moving vehicle as opposed to a camera, which will take a picture, but the vehicle is still already speeding. There's no uh slowing until after the fact. And that's still behavioral at that point. If someone could afford it, they could continue to, you know, speed to their heart's content. Is there any um uh impact or change in citation for habitual offenders?
Uh currently, the code does not uh afford that opportunity and the 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 maximum citation amount is actually set by the state law at three hundred dollars, even if we were to look at some variation or change to that. I would like to say to your other point, though, we will get information and we've seen examples of what the reports look like from other agencies uh that's that indicates that most people that get one ticket do not reoffend. Most of the tickets that are being issued are from those first offenders and then they aren't seeing uh them offend again. So there's does seem to be some benefit to long-term driver uh changing the driver's behavior to the to the cameras.
Thank you, council member Baldwin. Um, anybody else? Any other questions? If not, I'm moving on and the next agenda is community wellness discussion items, and that is going to be chaired by council member Trump Manuel.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, and I'll just turn it over to Joy, oh, Jeff Tate. Director Jeff Tate.
Well, thank you. Good evening, uh Chair, Deputy Mayor, Council Mayor. Um, you you had it right. Uh, we were gonna uh jump over to to Joy to offer a presentation uh from her team, so I'll turn it over to Joy.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council. My name is Joy Scott. I am the Community Services Manager and I am really excited to be here with you tonight with uh at least three of the four other members of my team. Uh, just want to make sure that everyone can see my screen here. So uh we wanted to come before you this evening uh to share a little bit more about our division and provide an overview because we have um quite a a number of items this year that we will um be presenting to council. So we wanted to make sure that we were starting off the year um with a shared understanding of um all of our program areas um so that we can be um more efficient and dive a little bit deeper in our future council presentations this year. Um, we do have quite a bit of content to get through, um but we have an opportunity for questions at the end. So um feel free to let us know if there are clarifying questions that come up as we go through the presentation, but otherwise, we'd love to be able to answer the questions at the end of the full presentation. Um, I am joined by three staff members this evening um and you will get to hear from them more and they will introduce themselves at the beginning of each of their respective program areas. So we can dive right in. The Community Services Division has um four main program areas. Um, the first one that I'll touch on briefly tonight is our Community Development Block Grant. Uh, we also have our Housing Repair Program, Human Services, and Neighborhood Programs. Our Community Development Development Block Grant or CDBG program area is a little bit unique in that it does not provide um its own set of specific services, um but supports a number of services uh otherwise available at the city, including um our Housing Repair Program and some of our human services, as well as some others that I'll touch on briefly. So in Community Services, we have two sources of funding that we work with and that we bring before council. Um, the first is, of course, general fund, human services dollars. For the twenty twenty-one program year, um we were, we worked with six hundred and eighty thousand dollars of general fund money that was made available to um to nonprofit agencies in the community. And we're going to talk about that a little bit later in the presentation this evening. For the first portion, we're going to focus on our Community Development Block Grant dollars. Um, so this pot of funding, which supports our Housing Repair Program and other programs at the city, um we receive from the Department of Housing and Urban Development every year. Uh, the number that we receive uh shifts because it is um a formula grant. It is calculated based on um population, housing condition, um percentage of poverty. It changes every year and the calculation um is a little bit different depending on what Congress approves. Um, but for this year or for the our prior program year of twenty twenty-one, we received six hundred and fifty one thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars. Um, we have yet to receive our allocation for twenty twenty-two. Um, one of the uh intricacies or foibles of the program really is that we don't receive our allocation amount for the year that we are in until about April um because of when Congress approves the federal budget. So this program provides um annual grants to entitled cities to develop viable urban communities. We are part of a urban county consortium, so we work very closely with the cities of Kent, Federal Way and Bellevue and with King County um to align our uh our goals for this program together and really work collaboratively as much as possible. Um, projects that we use these dollars for have to align with HUD's national objectives, um be eligible under HUD guidelines and benefit low and moderate income persons. Um, I'm not going to dive deeply into our administrative requirements tonight. You actually um have a presentation scheduled from me in April to do a deeper dive on Community Development Block Grant as well as a report out of our program accomplishments in twenty twenty-one. Um, but I did want to highlight those red items um are the pieces that we come before council on. Um, so you typically see presentations from the Community Services Team um for annual action plans every year for our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report every year. That's what's coming up in April. Um, and of course, every five years, our large-scale overhaul of our strategic plan, which is called the Consolidated Plan. Uh, there are a number of activities that are eligible for CDBG funds. Um, I've listed a number of them here. Um, some of them have restrictions attached to them. So for example, public services, we can only use up to fifteen percent of our annual allocation. Um, and of course, there is a cap on program admin costs as well. That's what we can bill for staff time. Um, we typically have um a pretty significant portion of our CDBG funds go towards uh home rehabilitation, our Housing Repair Program. Um, and we try to allocate the maximum towards our public services um based on direction that we've received from the council and our five-year strategic plan. I have um included here our consolidated plan goals. As I mentioned, we work really closely with those other jurisdictions that are entitlement jurisdictions in our urban county.
City Council.
I'm sorry.
Yolanda, uh you're.
Oh, um, so we work really closely with the other urban county consortium members of um Kent, Federal Way and Bellevue, and of course with King County. And we actually worked during the last strategic planning period, um focused on the council who um were part of the consolidated plan approval for um twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four, might remember, or twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, excuse me, might remember that we aligned these goals for the first time uh so that we are all working towards the same overarching um consolidated plan goals in these three areas. Um, so like I mentioned, um I will be back before you in April. Um, we also have a number of other uh parts of the CDG CDBG program this year um that you will hear from us on. We engage in public engagement, um really um all year round. We have opportunities for public comment, but we do a deeper dive in August to September in order to line up our planning for the following year. Um, so I'll be back before you in October as well to discuss our annual action plan for twenty twenty-three, um which will come before you in November for approval. Um, and I touched on much of this already. Um, of course, you'll see our public hearings for CDBG come up this year as you do each year. Um, we will also be uh working on the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four budget um process this year. And one of the things that comes up every five years for us um is uh a needs assessment. So you might recall our last needs assessment was completed in twenty nineteen. Um, and you will see um likely that reflected in our proposed budget for the upcoming biennial cycle as well. So I am going to turn it over to um our Housing Repair Program Coordinator to introduce himself and talk a little bit about our Housing Repair Program.
Hello, I'm Joel as Bjornson Housing Repair Program Coordinator. So we can, we service homes inside the city limits of Auburn, um including manufactured homes. Um, our qualifying uh needs, you know, the people that uh live inside the city limits are eligible. They have to own the home that needs repairs, um at least live there for at least and owned it for at least a year. And we want them to stay um, you know, at least a year after we do repairs. The income guidelines for um based on HUD um eligible um for the income brackets, one for the thirty percent, which is the lower HUD income bracket. You can make up to twenty-four thousand, three hundred. And our maximum at fifty percent of the HUD guidelines, one person can make up to forty thousand, five hundred per year. And then uh after they are approved, they have up to three years to access those funds. So last year, uh we were able to help fifty-three households and with a total of residents of ninety-eight people living in those residents and twenty. living in those residents, and 20 of those were children under the age 17 and under. We had extremely low-income households of 29, which was that first bracket that makes under the approximate $24,000 per year. And 40 of those households were over the age of 60, and 25 of them were households with a person with disabilities. This is a picture of a ramp that was built in a couple of years ago. This person was starting to have trouble getting up and down the stairs, and we were able to go in and build this ramp. And this house, this ramp was built with our in-house staff person at the time. And we have since just hired a new housing repair technician to be our on-staff person who brings a great knowledge of construction across the board, and he'll be a great addition to our program. And here's another one that was done with in-house repairs. You can see the steps were previously not quite safe. So they were rebuilt with all new, all new treads, new stringers. Made it much safer for the homeowner to get in and out of the home without having to worry about falling through.
So Joel's gone through a couple of examples of work that the program undertook in 2020 and 2021. So I just wanted to highlight, our Housing Repair Program really works to keep people in safe, healthy, and affordable housing. As you saw with our program statistics, a lot of, a lot of the folks that we serve are living on some of the lowest incomes that we see in our community. We serve a number of households that have seniors and folks with disabilities, and also households with young children. We see in this program where we can provide accessibility updates, the opportunity for seniors in particular to be able to remain aging in place in a home that they are comfortable and familiar with, in a community that they've chosen, and in a space that is affordable to them. Whereas if they needed to leave the housing that they had, oftentimes, they wouldn't be able to affordably remain in the community. This, this program really works, as you could see, with, based on the demographics, in a homelessness prevention capacity as well. So for many of the folks that we work with, the repair that they're faced with really would cause them to lose their housing, or they wouldn't have the ability to remain there financially. And oftentimes, because of housing costs in the community, this leaves folks with very few options of where to go. So some of the things of what to expect from this program in 2022 in terms of council engagement, we would ask that you keep an eye on your emails. I know that you receive the weekly council updates. About once every month, we include accomplishment highlights on a monthly basis for the Housing Repair Program. So typically, around mid-months, we share information from the prior month of household served. We include before-and-after pictures when we can, and also anecdotes from our staff. You also will see the program budget reflected in our CDBG annual action plan, and you'll hear much more about the accomplishments of the program from 2021 at the upcoming presentation in our keeper. So we're going to shift a little bit away from Community Development Block Grant and into our General Fund Human Services dollars. So looking at the other source of funding that our division works with, I'm going to turn it over to Kyla to share a little bit about our Human Services Program.
Thanks, Joy. Hello, I am Kyla Wright, the Human Services Program Coordinator. And just want to give a brief overview of the Human Services Program. So right now, our Human Services Program allocates funding for nonprofit agencies to provide direct services to community members. And we currently have contracts for 50 programs between General Fund and CDBG. And those contracts, the contract management pieces of those are in the form of quarterly reports and invoicing, regular monitoring for the contracted agencies, and support to agencies in a technical assistance capacity, and to help overcome some barriers to service provisions as it relates to specific programs and agencies. So supporting that collaboration and capacity building, part of the ways that that happens, I co-facilitate the monthly South King County Forum on Homelessness, which is a set of usually between 30 and 40 service providers attend across South King County to, to, to do collaboration, information sharing, skill building. I also host a monthly rental assistance learning circle for rental assistance for providers that are, have rental assistance to Auburn residents. And we also collaborate with other South King County cities on, on that monthly rental assistance meeting. Also work closely with regional partners in South King County community. We have a shared application for an upcoming funding cycle. That shared application is shared across 16 cities in South King, in King County, Northeast and South King County. And we'll share a little bit about that more in a bit. And that shared application is for the funding program that runs every two years. So we're currently in the 2021, 2022 funding cycle. And the upcoming application that begins in March will be for the 2023, 2024 funding cycles. And a little bit of a snapshot about the programs that are currently funded in this 2021, 2022 funding cycle, the types of programs are listed there, kind of detailed in, in the number of agencies and programs that we fund. So a wide range of, of programs that are represented, childcare support, food access, job training, legal assistance, senior services, shelter programs. So just to name a few, so wide breadth of programs that are funded. Our key component of the Human Services Program is our Human Services Committee. So you all might remember, last week, we had two new committee members that were confirmed as part of our nine-member volunteer committee that really has a wealth of experience and expertise in local human services information. So lots of subject matter expertise within that committee. I'm really lucky to have the folks who are volunteering their time have such a broad set of skills and information about human services in the area. And we meet monthly. We have extended meetings, particularly in application years. So this year, our Human Services Committee will be really dedicating a lot of time towards that application process.
Thanks so much for that overview, Kyla. So as Kyla mentioned, we are in our application year for human services funding, so 2022. And actually, starting in the first quarter of 2022 is when we accept applications from agencies to receive 2023 and 2024 funding. So we'll actually be back in front of you, both Kyla and myself, as well as some representation from some of our funded agencies in June of this year. At that time, we're going to do a little bit of a deeper dive on the full application cycle, as well as a breakdown of, an initial breakdown of the applications that we received. We will also be able to present on agency accomplishments over the past year. And similar to the presentation that we provided last summer in mid-2021, we'll be able to have some representatives from our funded agencies share stories of services of Auburn residents who have received services so that you can hear a little bit more in detail about the impact of the Human Services Funding in the community. We also will be in front of you in October to provide that detailed report from the Human Services Committee about expected agency funding for the 2023 to 2024 cycle. And then we've been, in the past couple of years, although there was a little bit of a break due to COVID, trying to do an annual joint meeting with the Human Services Committee for an opportunity to bring folks together from the council and the committee and have some shared conversation around trends and, and what each other is seeing in the world of human services. So we'll likely be holding that in December of this year, probably in alignment with our December 12th Community Wellness Special Focus Area Scheduled Meeting. I am going to turn it over to Chris to talk a little bit about Neighborhood Programs next.
Thank you so much, Joy. My name is Chris Lovings. Good, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Neighborhood Programs Coordinator here for the City of Auburn. First of all, thank you so much for your time. I'm going to share a bit about Neighborhood Programs, starting off with the actual vision of Neighborhood Programs. Within my department, I believe that Neighborhood Programs' goal or vision is to make sure that all residents have a love of place, that they feel like they belong within the city, and that they have the ability to influence the future of their community. So the mission of Neighborhood Programs is to build that community by providing investments and programming that promotes inclusive engagement, increases accessibility of local government, and enhances community wellness. When I think about connecting Neighborhood Programs, I kind of look at it in three different approaches. And off my program, it kind of comes around to these three things. The idea of communities connecting with each other, the idea of community connecting with the city, and then the city connecting back with community. Next slide, please. So I'm going to highlight a couple of programs. I'm going to mention some briefly, so National Night Out. It's a neighborhood block party for one night throughout all of Auburn. This is focused on ways for community members to connect with city staff and potentially elected you can connect with, eat alongside, and learn from community at the National Night Out. Fingers crossed it'll be in person this year. Civics Academy. Civics Academy is an 11-week course that shows you how community members, how the city operates, how decisions are made, funds are allocated, and how community members can be engaged within the city. Neighborhood Civics Academy actually takes place in between Labor Day and Thanksgiving. And so that's an 11-week course that is completely free. And to go back one time, National Night Out happens the first Tuesday in August. That'll be August 2nd this year. And then finally, I'm going to talk about the Matching Grant Program, as well as the Community Fund. The Matching Grant Program, next slide, please, has existed for several years, and it's actually a project-based grant that, in general, requires a homeowners association, social service agency, place of worship, really some type of incorporated entity that has the structural supports in place for community, community members to apply. The idea of this is that community members submit projects to the city, or a project to the city. And after it's approved by the city, that group then completes the project and submits receipts from their expenses. And their expenses are picked up. The city then offers matching funds that reimburses groups on the backend. And as you can see here, a few examples of some of the work that's happened over the past several years with the Matching Grant Program. One of the things that we have seen is that there are barriers in place that make it more difficult for community members to access these funds, and in a sense, can make it inequitable. Groups, first of all, they have to have the structure enough for funding to actually even start a project because they get reimbursed on the backend by the city. And they also have to offer something that the city can match, so cash, professional services, and/or volunteer hours. These barriers led to Neighborhood Programs and other city staff coming together to find a way to create a new program that works towards more equitable outcomes here within the city. And that leads me to the Community Fund. So with the Community Fund, community members submit ideas or projects in the valley and plateau areas in between January to March, so it's ongoing currently. The city looks at these ideas, chooses ones that fit the scope of Neighborhood Programs during the month of April. And then my role is to present it back to community members during the month of May to be voted on. The voted project is then completed by the city, and this is a way to kind of get around some of those barriers that we have currently seen that exist within, within the city. I'm really excited about this project. I'm really looking forward to chatting more of you at the end of the year to kind of share how it has been. But that is kind of the Community Fund, and that is also Neighborhood Programs. On the next slide, that Joy is going to share, you can see some examples of what we have heard, could be potential examples for the Community Fund. But yeah, that's Neighborhood Programs. Looking forward to sharing more of you later on this year, and I really thank you for your time.
Thanks so much, Chris. And I will say, I apologize, the PowerPoint seems to be missing one of the photos. It is in your packet, so if you haven't had a chance to look at your packet, I'd go back and take a look at that. One of our, one of our photos from National Night Out, we get some really good ones every year of our community coming together, enjoying themselves, and with our city staff, being able to go out and visit community in non-pandemic times. So some of the things that you can expect from our Neighborhood Programs in 2022, as Chris mentioned, hopefully, our Community Fund projects, our first Community Fund project will be moving forward, and we'll be able to report out to you how that's going. We will have Chris and myself back in front of you at the December 12th council meeting to provide a little bit of a year-end review so that you can hear at the end of the year how these initiatives, especially our newer initiatives, have gone. And as he mentioned, things are certainly still in flux with COVID in our community as we are thinking through what events look like, what safe gathering looks like, and also waiting to hear guidance from some of our national partners. So stay tuned for more information to come on both National Night Out and Civics Academy. But we will highlight those programs in the email updates that are sent to council members as well so that you can get a little bit of a sneak peek, sneak peek prior to our presentation in December. And I think I forgot to mention, hopefully, you've seen by now, we started this, I believe, in 2020 in our Human Services Program. We share success stories and anecdotal reports from our agencies every single week in that, in that council email. So if you have questions about kind of what the programming looks like, what it looks like when these programs are operating, what kinds of services they're providing, and also the impacts that they're having, in addition to our annual updates to council where we do a deep dive on kind of the quantitative pieces and the data and metrics that we have, we also try to share that qualitative information weekly. So please keep an eye out for that as well. Thank you so much for bearing, bearing with us through this somewhat lengthy overview of our Community Services Division. We really do work in a lot of different areas in the community, and I think that this provides a really broad overview of some of the pieces that our programming touches. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but also really just wanted to set this up for all of the times that we'll be in front of you this year to talk more in depth about these areas.
Okay, it's open for questions. Do any council members have questions? Deputy Mayor, you're going to, I can't see if anybody's raising their hands.
It's Councilmember Bowen.
Thank you, Councilmember Trout Manuel and Deputy Mayor. That was a wonderful presentation. Thank you. I do want to ask, for the information that you provided for the Housing Repair Program and the Human Services Program, you gave an indicator for how many were selected and supported through those as far as agencies and the number of homes that were repaired. But I would love to see what the demand is, or sort of that backlog of how many applied to each of those programs. So when we think about funding as we go forward for these areas, what's that gap between how many folks we were able to help with the funds we had available, and how many people weren't able to be selected or brought into the mix and in the round? So if you don't have that today, that's fine, but I would love to see that information come back in one of your next presentations, if that's all right.
Absolutely. It's a really great question, and I can give you a couple of data points tonight and then bring back more for you. For our Housing Repair Program, there's a couple of factors that influence that. The eligibility guidelines, especially in terms of the kind of income and homeownership, that is governed by HUD. So there are folks that we see applications for that are ineligible for our program, perhaps because they're over the income guidelines. And in those situations, we do connect those folks with other programs that might fit their needs but that don't have the same kind of stringent income guidelines. So we can try and bring back a little bit of that information for you. One of the things that impacted the program over the past couple of years was, of course, our COVID guidelines and restrictions on being able to go into people's homes, especially because our, the clients that we serve in that program really are some of the most vulnerable of our community members. We serve, as I mentioned, primarily seniors, folks with disabilities. And we needed to ensure that we were both keeping our staff safe as well as our program clients. So we do have, while we didn't turn away anybody during that time to submitting an application, we did have a pause on interior operations for the program as... as we responded to urgent kind of life safety, critical repair needs during that time, but not ones that had the ability to remain on hold for a bit. So we'll bring a little bit more of that detail at our April meeting. But in terms of who has been served and hasn't been, we do have a waitlist that we're working through and kind of a backlog of projects because of that delay due to COVID. For our Human Services Program, we will absolutely share the breakdown in our June meeting of what we see from this upcoming application cycle. But I can share that for our last application cycle, we had $680,000 available for human service agencies, and we received over 1.3 million in requests for funding. So we typically see significantly more than we have available to distribute. We are making available more funds this year due to some of the ARPA funds that have been made available to the city. But we also may see increasing award asks from agencies that have seen really unprecedented increased need in the community due to COVID-19 and also the economic impacts of that in Auburn. But we'll certainly be making a detailed breakdown of that available when we bring back those data points in June.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trap Manuel, it's Councilmember Baggett.
Okay, Councilmember Baggett, you're, take it away.
Thank you both. I appreciate that. Question is for Joy, but it has to do with, I think, a presentation that Kyla made. The South King County meetings on homelessness, are those open to the public? Or how often are they held?
Absolutely. So those meetings are held on the first Wednesday of every month from 9:00 to 10:30. Currently, they're held virtually via Zoom, and they are open to anyone. That meeting actually has been going on in some form for about 12, 13 years now. Auburn has been a co-chair of that group for about the last six and a half years. But it has rotated through a number of partner agencies and other community folks leading that. So I'm happy to share that out with any agency or entity that you know that works with folks experiencing homelessness who might be interested in joining.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Joy, and also your team. You did a great job, very comprehensive report, and we're looking forward to seeing you again in April. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Any other questions? Councilmember Stern.
Thank you, Councilmember. Just a quick question. Do you guys expect that there will be more CDVG funds in the upcoming year? Or is that, I'm just wondering what your forecast is?
So our CDVG funds have been trending upwards, and part of that is because part of the formula calculation that's used is our strict population, which we see increasing every year. So when I started at the city, our allocation was closer to just over $500,000. And of course, now it's at $651,000. I would anticipate that our allocation for 2022 will be somewhere between $650,000 and $700,000. But we certainly have seen an increasing trend, both as our population grows and as our housing stock ages over time.
Okay, that's really good. Do you think, do you see anything more coming out of Congress?
So we did receive a pretty significant influx of one-time funds, kind of. It was one time through the CARES Act that was provided to us in three separate installments. So one time and also slightly three times. We did have those funds for pandemic response. What we have heard at this point from our HUD Region 10 staff is that we are unlikely to see another influx of those specific funds being made available. That was through the CDVG CV program, especially as cities are now making their America Rescue Plan Act funds available. So I don't anticipate anything this year, but I certainly have been surprised before.
Right. Yeah, no, I'm just talking about the regular CDVG funding. Do you don't think Congress may or may not increase the level, or you just don't know yet?
We don't know yet. Certainly, things have been delayed because of the ongoing continuing resolutions that occurred, although we should receive our allocation amount in April. We typically see this program holding pretty steady in the funding award. When we see larger increases in funding related to CDVG, it's usually to the home program or ESG program, and King County is who oversees those funds for our region. So for the CDVG entitlement portion, the overall funding amount tends to hold pretty steady, although it certainly has significant bipartisan support. And we could see an increase in the federal congressional allocation for it.
Great. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Councilmember Baldwin is next. Councilmember Trap Manuel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Trap Manuel. One last question, which is, given that we are in an application year, and it sounds like we might even be in the application period for the Human Services Program, if there were new agencies or new nonprofits that have formed that were interested in applying, where would they go to do that, and what's the cutoff for them?
That is an excellent question. We'd love to get that question. So actually, about a third of the programs that we funded in the last cycle were programs that Auburn had never funded before. So we really try to create a very accessible process for agencies, especially those that are responding to emergent needs and are newer, that are community-based, and certainly those that are culturally specific or culturally responsive within our communities. So our staff in Community Services, and especially Kyla and myself, are happy to meet with agencies, and we do meet with a number of agencies directly. Our application cycle is going to be opening in mid-March, and we actually will be offering eight technical assistance sessions over Zoom through that time period in addition to ongoing phone or email or in-person technical support. So I would encourage agencies to reach out to Kyla or myself directly, and we can work with them to make sure they have everything that they need. We'll be offering workshops with step-by-step instructions on how to complete the application, and we're happy to work one-on-one so that agencies really fully understand the process and also what it looks like once they would enter contracting if they're awarded funds.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
I don't see any other hands raised up. Councilmember Trap Manuel.
If not, then Joy, thank you again for a fabulous report from your crew, Chris, Joel, and Kayla. Thank you very much for a great report and updating us on what's going on and deadlines for people to apply. So thank you very much. Turn it back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Trap Manuel. We have one more agenda to go through, and that is the legislative update. And for that, I would like to welcome Director Hinman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Hello, Mayor, Council. For the record, I'm Dana Hinman. I'm the Director of Administration for the City of Auburn. I work out of the mayor's office. And the caveat to my presentation is there is a major cutoff happening tomorrow. So there's a high likelihood that almost everything I say tonight may no longer be valid. So I want to offer that disclaimer. Things are moving very quickly. So just as a refresher to the council, the legislature started session on January 10th. They had their first major cutoff on February 7th, which means bills have to pass out of the committee and be read into the record on the floor by that time. At the time, there were several thousand bills that had been introduced, and now we're to several hundred that have made it through that first step. And then the next step for a bill is to make it out of its house of origin, and the deadline for that is tomorrow. There are other things that either keep a bill alive or cause a bill to die. But generally, those are the major cutoffs that we look for. So that's my caveat. So I'm just going to tie some of the bills that we are tracking and have been working on this session to our state priorities list that I presented to you all a few weeks ago. And I'll just start with public safety. Some of the things that we asked of the legislature in public safety was to work with the cities on clarifying the technical language in some of the police reform bills that were passed in the last session. I will say overall that most of us are very pleased with the engagement that we've had with our legislators and trying to work out language. There have been a lot of people at the table trying to get bills that are clearly stated and easier for our police officers and others to operate under. The main bills, there's four main bills that we are looking at. That is Bill 1719. This is a bill, House Bill 1719. This is a bill that clarifies the caliber confusion on non-lethal use of force. And there was some confusion on the caliber of weapons that are allowed, but the caliber of weapons that use non-lethal things like sandbags and other things kind of fell under that. So really, some word fixes there on that one. 1735 is a use-of-force bill, and it appears to be getting very good bipartisan support in the legislature. This, again, clarifies what law enforcement can and should do around involuntary transfers and some of those other issues that happen on the street where officers were not clear on how they could respond. 2037 is also another use-of-force bill, defines physical force as well, focuses on some of the things on Terry stops and some of the other things that officers just needed more direction on. This bill actually passed out of House over the weekend and is in the Senate. And we did a lot of work on this. There was a lot of negotiation with this bill and the language in the bill. And I will say that our legislators were very responsive to some of the concerns that we had on how the bill was moving. And the last police reform bill is 1788. This one is sponsored by one of our Auburn representatives, Eric Robertson. And this is the only bill that's dealing with pursuits and clarifying how vehicular pursuits can happen in communities. And Representative Robertson has been engaging quite heavily with communities and his fellow legislators as well to get some good language into that bill. And I'm going to stop there, just kind of by subject matters, if we have any kind of questions along some of those bills, because I'm going to be going over quite a number of them and don't want to get too lost. So if we have any questions on...
I have a question, Director Hinman.
Yes.
Since we have auto theft issues in our city, was there anything? I mean, it's not just our city, it's all over the country at this point. Was there anything as far as legislation is concerned? Was there anything that was brought up to where the police can apprehend when the theft is actually going on?
Okay, so I would probably defer to Chief Callier. I see him on the call. He, of course, has been tracking these bills pretty closely as well. That is kind of the pursuits and also the language in 2037 that is moving the language from probable cause to reasonable suspicion is likely going to make those things better understood. I guess, but again, I'm sorry, I'm stammering here. There's Chief, hoping to maybe clarify how that technical language, those technical language changes can help our officers.
So the only bill that's being considered right now that really affects auto theft is Senate Bill 5919, and that has the pursuit language in. Whether that, I believe that one is over in the House now for consideration. It's made it out of the Senate, but there is, pursuits are a contentious issue right now in the legislature. And so I don't know whether that bill will make it out. That will address the ability to actually pursue a stolen vehicle, which current state law, that went into effect last year, does not allow for.
Thank you. Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My question for kind of this package of bills is, you mentioned there's good bipartisan support, which is wonderful to hear. Do you know for these if some of the original sponsors are participating in the language modification?
They absolutely are. Yeah, they absolutely are. So it was Representative Goodman and Representative Johnson that led these bills last year. And what I can say is that they have, we started engaging with them last year trying to present, you know, kind of the real-world examples of what was happening with the bills that were just too vague, were not allowing our officers to really interpret what the spirit of the bill is. And that's, they've been good conversations. In fact, Mayor Backus convened the South County mayors and city attorneys, and it was a very good meeting. I think that could kick things off very well, and that engagement has really continued since then to help refine these sweeping bills.
Thank you. I think that would be, I like having it just on our record here because I think it's helpful for folks in the community to know that as we talk about changes to those bills that had passed, that the intent is still there of making sure that there's good protections for citizens and good direction for our law enforcement officers. So it's great to hear that those folks are still involved. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a really good way to put it. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Then I just want to follow up on the Deputy Mayor's question about thefts. Is there, was there anything, or is there still anything alive on catalytic converter thefts?
There is a bill that is still moving, and it's similar to what they were doing with copper wire and some of the other things where somebody is buying these things. And so I do believe it's only one bill that is trying to get more, more things in place, requiring identification, tracking of where these things are coming from, and ideally will curb the ability to, for these people to go to the places that want to purchase these things that are clearly stolen and have that sale become final and hopefully have some level of accountability for people, you know, having stolen property. So that is out there. It is sadly controversial because the industry is not wanting to have, I think, more regulation or more things put on them to try to help curb this issue.
Okay, thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterns. Any other questions? I don't see any hands up. Director Hinman, go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, just a few more. Another one kind of related to public safety. I mean, that's kind of what I put it in, but that is House Bill 1725 that this council passed a resolution of strong support. That thing, it is moving. It passed out of House unanimously with zero no votes. It is in the Senate. I do see that it is scheduled for executive session on, I believe it's this Thursday. And I wouldn't be surprised if they suspended the rules for a third reading and passed that quickly. It's a very good bill. Again, this is to create an alert system for the missing indigenous peoples. And, you know, see no problem there. And I think it'll be, I do believe it was Councilmember Sterns who indicated we would be the first state in the nation to have such an alert. So we will be very proud to see that move, and I wouldn't be surprised if it didn't have the governor's signature pretty quick. There's another one that's kind of under public safety as well. There's another one, it's kind of under public safety as well, that just kind of got onto the radar. It's Bill 1620 and it's emergency response bill. And it allows cities to apply for reimbursement for, for local governments related to extreme weather response, since we have been having heat waves and snowstorms like we've never seen before. So in emergency management, we're very pleased to see something that can support cities that are having to stand up emergency sheltering for extreme weather events. And I have our, our new emergency manager taking a look at that and checking with her counterparts around the state to see either if there's any details that we need to be aware of that could make this a good or bad thing or if it's something we, we certainly could and should support. The last two things would be kind of around the, the land use and regulatory subject matter that we have in our priorities. You have all heard us quite frequently now speaking about the Missing Middle Bill. That's House Bill 1782. There are still a lot of problems with this bill. We just submitted some, some comments to one of our representatives. There's a striker bill now on the record that I, they tried to rewrite the bill. There's some, some better things in it, but it is still a bill that preempts local governments from making their own zoning decisions and trying to apply a cookie cutter approach to, in a broad swath. And it's, it is something that we still strongly oppose and will continue to try and work with the bill sponsors. I think to Councilmember Baldwin's question on the policing bills, unfortunately, the exact opposite is happening with this bill. We're having a very difficult time having the bill sponsors engage with cities. And they kind of appear to be negotiating with themselves as opposed to working with cities who are actually in the position of having to, to enforce these things. And it's unfortunate and hopefully those things will change as time goes on. But it's, it's, this has been a very difficult one, unfortunately. And then that we did, I do believe I addressed the micro trenching bill. This is a bill that we also were in the position of having to oppose. It basically allowed micro trenching for the expansion of broadband without the city's ability to, to control how or where that might happen. And that bill does appear to have, have, has died. So hopefully we won't see that one come back, but we, we always watch them until, until the very end. And then lastly, under Social Services, there's, there's a couple of bills that we're looking at that have, have made it to our radar. One is Senate Bill 5662, and this is a bill that requires WashDOT to partner with local governments to help homeless persons living in their right of way. And this has been one of those very blurry lines that have been very difficult to, to address. And most cities have been asking for partnerships with WashDOT to, to work on these things as we see the, the tents on, you know, the sides of our freeways and medians and things of that nature. And, and so this is, this offers a kind of a partnering, partnering program and, and kind of requires WashDOT to work with us on those things. And then the last one is related to DSHS. And one thing that we will hear from our nonprofits and our homeless outreach administrator and quite a number of people is that they were difficult to, to get a hold of pre-pandemic and it's more difficult now. And so the legislature is putting forth a bill that is setting some minimum service requirements for DSHS. Has some good things in that bill, like telephone wait times to be at a maximum of 30 minutes, getting people back into the office, expecting in-person visits and things, things like that. So we will be supporting that as it goes forward and hopefully we can, we can see some good results from that. So with that, that's kind of the, the overview. There's a bunch of other things. And again, like I said, we'll see what happens tomorrow.
Any questions, Council? Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thanks, Dana. Really amazing and wonderful presentation. I was just wondering, will you be giving us an update in the future on the transportation package?
I will, and I would beg the partnership of our Public Works Director. As in fact, we were chatting about that earlier on, they did, to Councilmember Stern's point, they did release a transportation package. The, the two leaders in both houses have reached an agreement and now it's time to negotiate. And so that will continue down the road. So I'm, I'm confident that Director Galb is, is looking heavily into that. What we do know just from just the, the 300,000-foot level is we have had our expectations managed that cities should not expect a whole lot. Much of it will be focused on really the state priorities and, but there may be some things in there that we'll be able to take advantage of. But we will come back with more information on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just real quick, Dana, what were the bill numbers for the micro trenching and then the DH, I mean, the DSHS service times?
The micro trenching bill was House Bill 1722. And the DSHS bill is House Bill 2075.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Deputy Mayor, Councilwoman Baldwin asked the questions I wanted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions, Council? If not, thank you, Director Hinman, for the, for the presentation on the legislative update.
Thank you.
Council, do we have any other discussion items this evening? If not, any other new business? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.